Areas. So what we just have to be consistently distancing ourselves to a certain extent. But going along with the Ontario guidelines, we will be, I guess, extending from five groups of five to groups of 10. And there'll be different commerce opening up. But please, just this doesn't mean that the virus is gone. It just means that it's in a limbo right now and not necessarily within our boundaries. Or it could be here and people are just not tested into there. But it isn't showing its head right now in our area. But it doesn't mean that it won't come back. So all I'm asking you is to please play safe, look after yourselves, keep the hands washed, keep the distances, wear masks where you can. Until we have a good vaccine out that is going to protect us all, then we have to watch out for one another. And I will emphasize again, when you watch out for one another, you're also looking after that person that is has respiratory problems or is aged that can't really defend for themselves. So we have to be responsible and make sure we don't bring anything home. So take care of yourselves out there. I'd also like to say that with the LBGTQ and the Indigenous, any colored race that we have on this earth, let's look after each other. We have so many comments and it's coming so forward. And I think it's great that the interest is being brought forward right now that we have to pay attention on how we treat each other. And I'm sad that we have to have these demonstrations. I'm sad that we have to have the different things we do, but it's a point that comes across that says, we're not doing things proper in this country and in this world the way we should be. And this is understanding that's going to be coming across with this. So let's understand, let's look after each other, no matter who we are, what we are. Let's take care of each other and and make this world a better place, make this country a better place. Certainly this great province, certainly this county and the best hub of the earth that's Ingersoll, let's make it work. I would now like to call upon Kristi Van Cooten-Bazens, councillor. Van Cooten-Bazens, you had a few remarks to make.
I do, thank you, your worship. So Pride Month is the month of June. Councillor Bowman and I were there for the raising of the flag on June 1st. And it was our privilege, we brought greetings on behalf of all of council. We know that the rest of you are working and we did say that we were there to represent all of council. I just wanted to bring to people's attention that there are a few different Pride events that are happening. And I would get you to go to oxfordpride.ca to check them all out. But they do have an auction that's online right now for the month of June. And on June 20th, they're having a family day. And the events are all going to be live streamed on their webpage. So you can take part in those events in your own homes because of our COVID. Now, if anything's changing, I'm sure that they'll post it up there. But go and check it out and let's support the inclusivity of our community. That's the biggest thing. I agree with you, your worship, that we all need to be kind to one another. Kindness, that plays it right there. And to me, everyone should be equal in our community, no matter your race, your color of your skin, whether you are gay or not, it should not matter anything. Everyone is equal in my eyes. And I think I've read it on somebody's page, Facebook page before, if you're kind to me, I will be kind to you. So let's be kind to one another. And that's all I'm going to say on that. I'm going to bring up my other point. We have a letter that's come forward. So I'll bring that point forward at that point. Thank you very much, your worship.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Lesser?
Yeah, what I'd like to bring up is with everything starting to open up, the BIA has decided to step forward a little bit here in Ingersoll. Some of the older people, they'll remember that we used to do a thing called BIA bucks. We are bringing them back. What will happen with the new BIA bucks though is to give everybody a little bit of a financial break is if you purchase $5, they're in $5, $10, and $25 allotment. So if you purchase $5 BIA buck, that will cost you as a consumer, it'll cost you $4. The BIA will take care of the extra dollar difference. That can be redeemed at the moment. We have 25 stores participating. We know more are looking at coming on board. But that is obviously redeemed for $5 at that store, or 10, or 25, depending on the denominations that you buy. We are eliminating up to $200 for a sale at any one time. But again, we're trying to do two things. One, to help the community, obviously, to also help our merchants out. The five places that you can buy the BIA bucks at the present time are my store, Lesser Jewellers, you can use Young's Pharmacy, you can use Joker's Crown, the Old Bakery Cafe, and oh, Heavenly Sweets, sorry, I knew I'd forget one in there. Anyways, like I say, it's a good little incentive. So hopefully people will come out and use them. Like I say, the more they get used, the more stores will also get on board.
Sounds good, thank you. Councillor Lesser, you also wanted to talk about gold for grads?
Sorry?
No, that was me, and I'm going to bring that up when.
Okay, I apologize, I have that written down in the wrong spot. Thank you so much. Okay, any other further comment by councillor? Deputy Mayor Freeman?
Thank you, your worship. I do want to make comment about the demonstration that was held today. A young man by the name of Nathan Boyce got a lot of people together to to march in town and concerning Black Lives Matters. And there was about 40 people, about 12:30, I believe there was around 25 people at the three o'clock march. And while we were having technical difficulties with our council meeting, I peeked out the window and there was about 25 people. So again, kudos to you, Nathan, and to all those people who joined in. Many people would not be comfortable because of COVID. We I marched in the first one and lots of folks waving from their cars, honking their horns, et cetera. So thank you very much for those who participated. And ladies and gentlemen, Black Lives Matter. Thank you, worship.
Okay, at this point in time, I'd like to ask, is there any items of culinary interest on the items that are in front of us this evening? Okay, seeing nothing, all righty. I would like to move on then to the minutes of the council meetings. Am I correct there, clerk? I'm on track here. May, that's May 11th, regular meeting, council minutes, and that would be councillor Use?
Yes. Moved by myself that the minutes from May the 11th, 2020, regular meeting of council be adopted as presented.
Discussion. Oh, could I have a second on that, please?
One second.
Thank you, Kristi. Councillor, sorry.
It's okay.
Opposed. This is passed, thank you very much. Going on to council committee minutes, it'd be upper Thames, councillor Bowman.
Thank you, your worship. Moved by myself, councillor Bowman, that the minutes for the April 28th, 2020, upper Thames, BOD AGM be adopted as presented.
Could I have a second on that, please?
Sure.
Thank you, Gordon. Councillor Lesser? Discussion?
Your worship?
Councillor Petrie, please.
I know we're doing the check distribution. I tried to raise my hand at the last one, but it wasn't seen. Is it possible just to give an update for the upper Thames?
Certainly.
Okay. The upper Thames is being hit by the COVID. And as far as financial goes, of course, their most of their projects didn't go forward. So at this time, they were approved at one point for the CNWS. They received $300,000 of that, and then they were told they did not qualify for it. So that's resulted in over $1 million being a deficit at this point. The good news is that the conservation areas are now allowed to be open for limited camping. And so people can go enjoy the conservation areas. I encourage them to do so, of course, keep safe and keep space. And enjoy those areas and get some fresh air. Of course, the board is going to try to limit as much as possible the shortfall. Staff is working hard on that to bring us ideas. And of course, there will be no impact at this time to the levees. Thank you for that.
Thank you for your report. Further comment? Those opposed to the motion? This motion is passed, thank you. Moving on to BIA meeting minutes, deputy mayor Freeman, please.
Thank you, worship. Moved by myself that the minutes from the BIA meetings dated February 11th, March 10th, April 28th, May 12th, 2020, be adopted as presented.
Thank you, could I have a second there? Thank you, Kristi. Discussion. Those opposed? This is passed, thank you. Right now to the Police Services Board minutes, please. Councillor Van Cooten-Bazens, please.
Thank you, worship. Moved by myself that the minutes from the Police Services Board meetings dated February 24th, May 7th, 2020, be adopted as presented.
Could I have a second there?
Well, your worship?
Thank you very much. Deputy Mayor? Could I have a discussion? Those opposed? This motion is passed, thank you very much. Check distribution. Councillor Lesser, please.
Moved by myself that the April check distribution be adopted as presented.
Could I have a second there?
Councillor Use?
Thank you. Discussion.
Your worship?
Councillor Petrie, please.
Thank you. Could I just request that anybody who's not speaking have their microphone on mute? I'm getting feedback, I can hear people talking in the background, so.
Okay. Thank you. Further discussion on disbursements? Those opposed? This motion is passed, thank you. Special reports. Town hall reopening. Councillor Petrie? Would you like to read that after, after the report or before?
We'll go with after.
Okay, that sounds good. CAO?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So before council is a tentative report or tentative date in a report outlining the issues that we're dealing with as far as reopening the town hall to the public. And right now, we're looking at a soft launch date of early in July. And I've listed the reasons and the things that we have to do to prepare for that as employers and safeguarding our employees. As you mentioned at the lead off of the meeting, the pandemic is still around us, there's still issues, health concerns, and we have to look after our employees first and foremost as employers. I'd be happy to answer any questions council members might have.
Thank you. Comments, please? Seeing none. Councillor Petrie, would you please read the motion?
Absolutely, your worship. Moved by myself that report A-014-20 be received by the council of the town of Ingersoll as information, and further that staff be invited or advised council should the tentative reopening date be amended.
Could I have a second there on that? Sir? Thank you, deputy mayor. Discussion. Those opposed? This motion is carried, thank you. We have service delivery review. CAO, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as council is fully aware, in 2019, with the announcement that regional governance was going to be under review by the province, the nine municipalities in Oxford decided to be proactive and use some of the funding that had been provided by the province to do a service delivery review. So that review has been going on for just over a year now. The final report's been prepared. And I know from a council perspective, it's a pretty daunting report. There's over 400 and some pages, many schedules, probably 96 specific recommendations. And you haven't heard about this in a while, but the CAOs and their senior leadership teams have been working with CN Watson and Associates for over the course of the year, many meetings, many conversations, many teleconferences, working through some of the issues. And I think what we discovered was that by and large, municipalities in Oxford County are working fairly well together. They're communicating, they're sharing services, and they're working, I think, in the best interests of their collective constituents. We'll see that a little later in the agenda when we get to the interim CBO appointment. That's just an example of municipalities working together within the county. So the CAOs worked collaboratively for, through a number of meetings, and took the recommendations that were found within the executive summary. And we tried to capture the discussion around them and the key points, agreement and disagreement around there and with recommendations. So there's a lot of documentation there. I'd be happy to answer what questions I could. If we can't find the answers tonight, we'll bring it back to a subsequent meeting. But by and large, the recommendation tonight is that we adopt the report, obviously for information, that we encourage municipalities to continue to work and communicate with one another and implement those things that are easily implementable at an administrative level and report back to council as necessary on other items that would need council approval before they go forward. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Bill. Comments, questions?
Councillor Use?
Please, councillor, go forward.
Just, so are we able to ask questions on specific points in the in the report here as well? Basically, I was going to ask about the about the consolidation of the police services boards excluding Woodstock. Is that okay? Or should we save that for another day?
CAO, please, are you?
I mean, this report is for council. Yeah, you can ask as many questions about that document as you want to.
Please, go forward.
Okay, great. So it states their benefiting municipalities. There's really only five, one, two, three, four, five. Now, it was my belief that the other municipalities that do not have police services boards would, it says here that they would not benefit, but I believe that they were, they would be allowed to have an opportunity to participate. And a lot of those other municipalities have policing committees as opposed to an actual official service board. So is that going to change those numbers at all? And really, I guess the main question is, is what is the situation or the, where are we in that process of the province coming to us saying that we have to consolidate the police services boards?
Mr. Mayor, through you. So it's our understanding that legislature is looking at that. There's, you know, a draft bill in front of the House that they're dealing with. It would call on, you know, all service areas that are reading service by the same detachment to have one common police service board. There's five benefiting municipalities identified in the report because, as you said, Oxford doesn't have a police service board as the county themselves, Woodstock's excluded. I believe Zora and one of the other ones don't have a Section 10 agreement with the OPP, they're under Section 5.1, or I've got it reversed. But you're right, they do have committees. So they would be wrapped up and included should the legislation become part and parcel of our new reality. Where that stands with the province, I think, as everything else, things have been set aside as they've dealt with the pandemic and the provincial emergency. But it's our understanding that the will there is at the provincial level to move forward with this piece of legislation. So again, from a CAO and senior management perspective, we didn't waste a lot of time discussing about this because we feel that the decision is being made at the provincial level. And we would only revisit it if something happened and that legislation didn't come to be. I think within the report, they noted the savings of consolidating the police services board to one. In the big scheme of things, I don't think it's huge dollars you're talking, but there might be some efficiencies and it certainly might facilitate an easier time for our detachment commander and his senior staff if they were only reporting to one board instead of five.
Thank you. Further comments and questions? Deputy Mayor Freeman?
Thank you, your worship. Bill, I know that you and the other CAOs in Oxford County have met in the past anyway, that you've had regular meetings about the year. I'm guessing, though, that this was a very, a great opportunity to really take a good look at all of the opportunities that you could use for sharing and so on. And are there some highlights? Like, I didn't see, reading the whole thing, I didn't see anything earth shattering as far as recommendations that are concerned. But could you summarize for us, not even, not so much tonight because I don't want to put you on the spot, but maybe for the next council meeting, you could, some things that perhaps we could glean from other municipalities, what they're doing and so on, and vice versa that they can get from us?
Okay, well, I think the, I'm just going to go back to your first statement. And actually, this service delivery review is a tool that actually provided the catalyst to bring the CAOs together. The CAOs did not regularly meet across Oxford County. It was sporadic at best and probably less than once a year. Usually, we usually got together when somebody was leaving to wish them well as they moved on, and they're either retirement or a new adventure. But as far as this service delivery review, we found it rewarding that it did bring the senior administrators together. It also brought members of our senior administrative teams together. I know our deputy CAO, Michael Graves, was involved. I know our treasurer was involved with the treasurer's group as we looked at different recommendations from different perspectives. So as my colleague in Woodstock, David Creary, said, hopefully it will prove to be something that we continue to do as we move forward. And I know we're looking for new leadership at the county level. And then we're hoping that this type of open dialogue can continue and we take the time from our busy schedules to actually meet and discuss issues with our neighbors more often. I think the one takeaway that I have is, you know, there were obviously various opinions around that table, different needs. And one of the important things that I think came out of it was that there may be times when municipalities don't have the capacity or the need for something all to themselves. But rather than looking at shifting things to the county level where we all pay regardless of need, encourage more municipalities to look at sharing resources amongst themselves with those with the need. So if two municipalities need something, they could come together and and work on that cooperatively. It didn't necessarily mean shoving something up to the county where we'd all funded the costs where maybe only a majority or minority of us were actually requiring the use of the service. So I think it provides clarification on what some of the other needs were around the county, what pressure points other municipalities are seeing. And overall, it was a time-consuming, thought-provoking exercise, but I think it paid dividends in the end.
Sounds good.
Your worship?
Councillor Petrie, please.
Thank you, worship. As much as it's probably a little bit dry report for a lot of people, reading it really outlines the large area of services that are provided across the county and the things that have to happen to where your tax dollars go and where everything happens and why it costs so much, because there's a lot of stuff going on. And especially in different, I appreciate the the parts, like Bill said, where, you know, every little area has different needs. So if we can accommodate that and help that out, that's, that's, that's great. Instead of going to the county, like you said, then everybody pays for it. But one thing I didn't see in there is about boundary adjustment in that process and whether there was an opportunity to streamline that process, a lot like they talked about with the boundary road adjustment, where, or boundary roads, where everybody talked about a standardized how that would be maintained. Or if there was any sort of discussion on that level about standardizing that process throughout the county. So it sped that future boundary negotiations up and allowed everybody to proceed faster than across the county.
Mr. Mayor, through you. So that was not part of the terms of reference of the study. Obviously, there's difference of opinions. And although I think it was briefly touched on early when we were formulating, you know, the the call for tenders for quotations on doing this project, there was no consensus on whether or not that should form part of the review. And it really came down to, let's focus on the services municipalities are providing. Is there a way to enhance how they're provided? Is there a way to share costs or cut costs or create greater efficiency? So boundary adjustment really did not fall within the categories that were examined. I don't, I don't disagree that, I'm hoping at some point the province will review that piece of legislation and maybe go back to appointing some type of third party arbitrator or mediator for that process. But right now, we have to live with the legislation as it's written.
Thank you. Councillor Use, would you read the motion, please? Oh, I'm sorry, councillor Lesser? Please.
That's okay. Bill, I guess just more for the public, when you read through this report, I see that a number of things, the recommendation is sort of leave it at status quo. But they're recommending that a couple of things get consolidated. So where's the next step come from? Who sort of takes the lead on looking at the possibility of consolidating some of these issues? Is that going to come from the county? Is that up to the CAOs? Just wondering where we're going from there at this moment.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. Councillor Lesser, I think the conversations that we had at the CAO level is that those areas of common interest will have to be pushed by the CAOs. There'll be either conversations of one, two, three, or more CAOs, depending on some of the issues that need to be resolved. So I'm not, you know, if you gave me an example of one of the services, I might be able to answer a little more detail. But a lot of the drive for this will come from either councils requesting more study be granted. So I'll use one example. In 20 years ago, there was a study done by KPMG that talked about that all road maintenance should go to the lower tier municipalities and the county should only be responsible for the capital programs and funding the capital costs. That's been talked about, but within this study, it said a further study should be undertaken, like a more comprehensive study, just to look at the costs and benefits of looking at something that, updating a 20-year-old study. So based on the new leadership that comes out of the county selection of a new CAO, I would think the CAOs will talk about that and we'll see if we can't jointly push that request up through our respective counties to undertake studies like that.
Thank you.
Thank you, CAO. Councillor Use?
Moved by myself that report A-015-20 be received by the council of the town of Ingersoll as information. And further, that staff continues to dialogue with other municipalities on matters identified herein of common interest, implementing those ideas to increase effectiveness and efficiencies. And further, that staff will bring back for council review and approval, those matters requiring a formal council approval.
I have a second there on this, please. Thank you, Kristi. Just, just, just raise your hand up, the quickest hand I got, I grabbed. All righty. Those opposed? This is passed, thank you. Our next item, CBO recruitment.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as council is aware, our current CBO is tendered to resignation. She's going to be pursuing an opportunity in another municipality. So we're in the position of recruiting to fill that position. I'm here before council asking for permission to utilize I'm here before council asking for permission to utilize a third party to help us in that recruitment. And I tried to outline some of the reasons why, but maybe I wasn't clear enough in the report. I focused more on the cost. So under our procurement bylaw, for expenditures over 5,000 and less than 25,000, I'm to try and gather, or staff are to try and gather three competitive quotes. I did approach four companies, two have responded, one looked at it and then decided not to respond, and the third one indicated right from the get-go that they would not be able to provide a quote. So you have two quotes in front of you, but I'll maybe just speak to the need a little bit. So this is a senior management position within the organization that's responsible not only for the implementation and the administration of the Ontario Building Code. They also look after facilities of Town Hall and some of our adjacent facilities, and they're also responsible for bylaw enforcement within the community with those duties that overlap with fire that looks after other components of bylaw enforcement. So it's a senior position within the organization, and I've been told from my counterparts across the province that this is a more difficult position based on the qualifications necessary to fill. And I think I was speaking to a couple of councillors and talked to them about, in this day and age when you're trying to recruit someone new to your community, you also usually have to recruit their partner as well. So, you know, in this day and age of dual incomes and partnerships within families, it's, it's quite an undertaking to try and attract somebody from three or six hours away to make a commitment to move to be able. So if you want to expand your draw and your ability to attract capable candidates, sometimes I think it's advisable to look at getting some specialized assistance in this matter. I also think that it sends a message to potential candidates that this position's serious within the organization if the municipality's taking the step to hire a professional firm to assist them in that recruitment. So as far as the two bids that I received, it's a little bit like comparing different kinds of apples, and it depends on your flavor. They both vary based on a range of prices, depending on how much work or how many candidates or whether they're involved in the interview process or not. So I would say from a financial perspective, the firms are fairly competitive, either one, you know, is probably competitive. So I don't know, I now see two Councilor Van Cooten bosses, does she still only get one vote or? So that threw me for a second, I thought who was joining our meeting, but so there is that. And I hear, we have a working knowledge of Nigel Bell-Chambers and Associates. I hear good things about Ward Up to Grove, they're out of Listable, Ontario, and they do a lot of human resource management within southwestern Ontario. So I would be happy to answer any questions council might have.
Okay, please raise your hand and I will, Counselor Petrie.
Thank you, your worship. I agree that this position is going to be a more difficult position to recruit. I don't know why anybody would like to be a CBO, but there seems to be people who like the job, so congratulations to them. But it is a specialized field and there's only so many positions. So I agree that we probably need someone here to encourage people to apply and ensure that people apply and find the right amount of candidates to give the town a choice on who we, on who we appoint to be our CBO to make sure we have a qualified candidate. I kind of, in my conversation with Bill and stuff, I kind of disagree on the next part with him in the fact that I think we have an HR person here, we have Bill, we have staff here. I believe that we can, our staff can, is qualified to be able to, we have a job, I believe we have a job description that we, as the organization, can properly interview and select the right candidate. Staff know the strengths of the positions that we, over the past years, and the weaknesses that have come from that position and the issues and the great things and everything that I've had to deal with. If it's a subject matter issue, I'm in favor of bringing forward someone like a CBO, a retired CBO or something like that, to issue, like to make sure that the person's qualified in the actual field. From an HR perspective, I think that we have someone, I believe that position's in-house, so I'll leave it there for discussion.
Okay, for a discussion, anyone else would like to, Counselor Lesser, please.
I'm gonna voice basically the same opinion so far as Brian in the fact that, yeah, I have no problem if we hire somebody to help us recruit, somebody, it is an important position, so let's make sure we get the best candidates that we can. I would like to think that our staff should be able to conduct the interviews, and in my opinion, I would actually like to see us go with Ward Up to Grove. I like Nigel, I know Nigel has helped us quite a few times in the past. I guess Ward is going to be a little bit different, and I'm just wondering if they may offer a different perspective that may help us with other recruitment down the road than Nigel will again be used to the way that Nigel does it. So like I say, I would like, personally like to see us go with Ward Up to Grove.
Further comment? Deputy Mayor Freeman.
Thank you, your worship. I also agree that we should be hiring someone to help us with the recruitment. I though would like to see, again, based on the, the opportunity for consistency and objectivity that we have, that person be involved with the interviews as well, because they're going to be the one that's going to be selecting the person. I think it may give more professionalism to the interviews, but again, whatever's council wishes, I'm sure if we go one way or the other, we'll be fine. I, however, feel that Nigel Bell-Chamber would be the right person. Again, we all know Nigel, we all know who he is, what he's all about, and I think just about everyone out there in Ontario knows about, anyone in the municipal sector knows Nigel Bell-Chamber. I think if you have Nigel Bell-Chamber knocking at your door, asking if you'd be interested in a job, then you would sit up and take notice, and it may help impact to get some people who may be sitting on the bench and not sure if they want to make the move or not. Thank you.
Counselor Petrie.
Yeah, see, I'm gonna disagree with Counselor, sorry, Deputy Mayor Freeman there, in that when I read Nigel's, absolutely nothing against Nigel, he's an expert in his field. I just don't believe this is more, from what I saw from his proposal, what he was more proposing was something that more is an HR task of correlating, helping put out the job description. It says review of applicants, but not really going out and finding those applicants. And that's our problem with this position, is that we're going to have a problem finding applicants. I have full confidence in our staff to be able to review those applicants once we have them, but we really need someone who's experienced to go out and really hunt down those people to give us a chance at having some selection. And I saw that more in the first one, as far as, so I have to agree with Counselor Lesser on that one than I did in Nigel's proposal.
Thank you. Further comment, questions? Counselor Van Cooten-Bossens, please, I got you, Rick.
Perfect, sorry, I've, I've been, I apologize to all of you, I've been freezing up. My internet's been going in and out here tonight, so my apologies. I have heard the last couple of councillors speak, so I was all for going with Bell-Chamber, but I kind of have to agree with Counselor Petrie that I, I do like what they have to say for Ward and Up to Grove as well. I do think that we should be having them help us select, but I would agree that I don't think they need to help us do the interviews. I think that, I think that we have a great team at the helm of our community, and I think that that can be done that way. So those are just my thoughts on that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hughes.
Yeah, I'm not gonna take up too much time, basically exactly what Christie and, and, or sorry, Counselor Van Cooten-Bossens and Counselor Petrie said. I like what, what the Ward and Up to Grove have to offer, and again, we have an HR department, let's utilize them. That's what they're there for, that's why we hired them, and it's, it's, hey, it's part of their job.
Sounds good, sounds good. Thank you. The, I'm not cutting off comments or anything, I'm just, I just thought that that was winding down, but I'm going up to you, Counselor Bowman, because there's a kind of a situation here with, with the motion, it's a two-part. And I know that we have kind of some form of splintered thoughts right now on, on the company that we would like to go with, with the help in selection, and then there's also the, the councillor appointment. So I'm not too sure if you appoint for one, whether you lose out on the other or whatever, how that, how that works, but I think you're going to have to kind of, we'll leave it now, that first section, and we'll go to the second section of that, if that's okay, and that's council appointing, so that then maybe that can be out of the way, so that when we do vote, we're voting on, on kind of one item. Does that make sense to you, clerk? I'm just kind of concerned on, on how we should do this, because we're kind of, one vote is going to make two decisions, and I just want to make sure that if we, if we decide on what our councillor appointee is, then that's already established, and we can, we can do that then when we make the full motion, we can go forward. That makes sense to me. Is that okay with you, Counselor Bowman?
Yes, that's okay with myself, your worship. Michael, a question to you as clerk, would there be a problem breaking this motion into two sections? The first, appointing the, the potential hire, and then doing a second motion to potentially appoint the representative? Is that a problem, Michael?
No, that's not a problem at all.
Okay, your worship, with that in mind, if you so wish, I will make the first part of the motion, appointing the firm, and then we will move on with the appointee of a representative.
That sounds great, Counselor, please forward.
Okay, thank you, your worship. Moved by myself that report A-017-20 be received by council for the town of Ingersoll as information. And further, that council approves the hiring of Ward and Up to Grove at the price of $6,500 to $8,500 for the assistance in the recruitment and hiring of the chief building official.
I have a second here on that. Thank you, thank you, Gordon. Could we open this for a discussion, please? Seeing no discussion, those opposed.
Deputy Mayor Freeman.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. This is approved, thank you very much.
Okay, your worship, moving on with the second part of this, if you don't mind, your worship, we've, it says in the report by the CIO that there is one representative of council to be appointed. I'm not sure whether that stands, whether it has to just be one or whether there can be two. I see Bill has disappeared here. Deputy Mayor Freeman.
Yes, I wanted to speak to it to you, worship.
Certainly, I would like to, if I could hold off on that for one moment, I'm just going to go up to the clerk and ask how the ruling on, I've been asked today if two people, if we can have two councillors plus the mayor on this committee. And so I said, really, if that's what the council would prefer, then that, that's fine. I got no issues with it, except do we have to change any motion that is in our bylaws that indicate for when you are hiring a director? At this point in time, we have mayor and councillor, or can that be a friendly adjustment?
It would be against the policy that you currently have, but council capacity resolution saying despite the regular hiring policy for a director, that it approves more than one person. The only thing I would caution is you don't want to go to a quorum of council.
Correct, correct. So this, this change in policy then will only refer to this situation, and then at any other hiring a director, then it can be readjusted at that point in time or not, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Now, the, changing the policy, do we have to word that within the motion?
Well, I think I would just state that despite the hiring policy and procedure, council appoints blank and blank as council member on the selection for the committee for the CBO at this time.
Okay, all righty, good enough then. I will then go to Deputy Mayor Freeman, who had his hand up to comment.
Thank you, worship. I've been involved with yourself on many hirings in the past, and I am wanting to put my name forward to sit on the committee. I spoke with Counselor Van Cooten-Bossens, and she had indicated that she would like to as well, and so you may have heard from her, I'm not sure who it was you had heard from, but anyway, yes, so as in the past, I would be happy to sit on the committee again.
Counselor Van Cooten-Bossens, please.
As the Deputy Mayor has alluded, I, I did, I know that he has in the past sat on it, and I would like to put my name forward for this as well, and if it is possible for two of us to be on there, then that would be great. I have the time that I have available at this point, and so I would, I would respectfully ask if council is okay with it to be able to sit on there as well and have a say with our CBO and a part of that selection process as well, so.
Thank you very much. Now, we haven't really finished updating to see who else would like to be on there, so just don't count your chickens yet. Counselor Hughes.
I'd, I'd also like to throw my name in there to be on the hiring committee. Just, hey, why not? I have the time available as well, I'd be able to put forward on that.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Counselor Petrie.
I will not be putting my name forward. I want to speak against adding, going against our policy at this time, and I think it's precedent-setting, slippery slope, absolutely nothing against anybody, I wish everybody the best of luck. I just think that the policy's there for a reason. We'll have our say when it comes to council, council appoints the person at the end of the day, and I believe that, so I can't, it's gonna add one more person rather than just have one mayor on.
Thank you very much. I'm going to go back to the clerk right now, if I could, and that is, clerk, should we, do we need to vote on, on a policy change?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I'm understanding the question. You're, you're, you're not really voting on a policy change, you're talking about change for this time. I think what Petrie was saying is that that may set a precedent for the future when somebody says, well, we did it subsequently, we approved something, but, I mean, if that's something council wants to change as a policy, they have to bring that policy back as a report and to deal with that at that time, but I don't think that's what I've heard from council. I think you're trying to determine a one-off, but I think Counselor Petrie's point is valid in that the next time you're hiring a director, someone, a member of council may say that they feel that there should be two members of council and the mayor, just as we did for the CBO. So, yeah.
Okay, help me out here. So the situation is, is that we have on the floor right now a thought, so we're kind of asking discussion on whether we should change this policy for this time only, this evening, or, or leave it the same? Can I ask for consensus or? On that, Michael?
Which Michael you're speaking to?
I'm sorry, clerk, I should say.
I think maybe you just need to ask the other councillors what their thoughts are, so we can try to determine if there's a consensus or?
Good enough then, I'm going to start, I'm just going to roll around here because I haven't, we have Counselor Van Cooten-Bossens thoughts on it already. Counselor Bowman.
Your worship, I have the motion in hand. I have to tend to agree with Counselor Petrie, I, even though I know that we, we were only doing it for this time only, but I, I have a bit of an issue with setting a precedence that we won't really want to see carried on in the future.
Okay, and I shouldn't have actually jumped in that way, Counselor Van Cooten-Bossens, I kind of thought I knew how you were thinking of, but I'm going to ask you directly, what your thoughts on, your views on, on whether we? What's your thoughts on, your views on, on whether we should change our policy for this time or not?
Well, I obviously don't have an issue with us changing the policy for this. I don't think that it sets precedence. I think that it puts another voice at the table and another set of ears to see and listen to who's coming. I do have experience in hiring for my days when I was a general manager of a hotel as well. And it also gives me experience within our own community then in that respect. I have sat back for quite some time, been on council for a long time, and the only opportunity that I've ever had is when we hired our current CAO, so I kind of would like to have that, but that's just my own thoughts, so.
We're just, we're just looking at the policy itself right at this second.
I understand.
Yep. Counselor Hughes, on the policy itself, are you, what's your thoughts and comments?
On the policy, my.
For this session?
For this specific opportunity, this, this specific situation, I'm, I'm not really tied to either or. Precedent setting, possibly, possibly not. It's, and at the end of the day, if it's brought forward at another situation where there's hiring, it, it's gonna meet the same vote that, that, that we're currently sitting with right now, whether we'd be willing to alter the, the policy to allow two counselors and one, and the mayor, or whether it's just going to be one counselor, one mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Lesser.
Well, I, I've got no problem for this one if we actually have say, two counselors on, and my opinion is we should actually take a look at the policy and review it. It's an extra voice when we're hiring people to run our town, and my feeling is that if we can have the mayor and two counselors, we're probably getting a better perspective than the mayor and one. So for this motion, I'll go ahead, and like I say, I'd like to see us review it for the future.
Okay, thank. With, with this one, you'd like to go at what? As one?
With this one, I say go with two counselors and the mayor.
I see. Thank you very much. Counselor Petrie?
Can I ask the CAO who else is on the selection committee?
Certainly, I think it'd be, certainly it's the CAO and Bill, who else will be on there? We'll, we'll, we'll let you sit. If we hire Ward, will they be on or off? So that, that's gonna be kind of.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Petrie. I think the bid from Ward Up Grove was not to participate in the interviews, so they wouldn't be at the table. It would just be myself and whatever members of council join me.
Further comment, Counselor?
Yeah, your worship.
Just one second, please. Deputy Mayor? Please, Counselor Petrie?
Yeah, so this goes back to when we've hired other staff as well. Again, it's the responsibility of the CAO and staff to to run the organization and work with staff. So again, I don't want to create a situation where there's a clear overrun of staff as far as when choices are made. I think it should, I think it needs to be balanced. Because again, we're giving, we're delegating our authority over the CBO to the CAO. So I just don't want to create a situation where it's a three-to-one vote, or I, I would just like to see a balance of staff, and I'd like to see more staff on the committee, on the, on the, on the selection committee, to tell you the truth, to balance that out. Because again, staff that has to, they're responsible for running the organization.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Freeman?
Thank you, worship. My apologies. I thought Counselor Petrie was, was finished, so. Yes, it's my opinion on this. Again, it's obvious I would like, I don't have an issue in having another person join in, another member of council. And as far as setting a precedent, again, I think each issue stands on its own, and there may be not so much a hiring, but something else where we will have a committee where we need to add, or we'd never remove, but add more people. And I think each one would stand on its own. So I'm not concerned with precedent setting.
Okay, thank you very much. It looks like what we have is, is those concerned, certainly is, is four counselors right off the bat are, are happy with making a change of procedure at this point in time for this time only to have a second person on the committee. Does anyone have any further comment on this before I ask further for us to, to figure out who those two may be, or before we can put on two lines onto that motion? So that's how it feels, listening to you folks. Is there any further comment or thoughts? Deputy Mayor Freeman?
Your worship, maybe, maybe consider nominations in order to determine who?
Oh, yes, but, but.
Just one time?
No, 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 it's good. I'm just, you're just one step ahead of me right now. I just want to make sure that we're okay with two lines going on this, that we are going to be putting two people on there. If there's any further concern on that before we go for nominations. Any further comment on that subject? Thank you very much. Michael, is that, clerk, is that okay, that, that procedure?
Yeah, I think you've determined that you want two appointees, and now we'll, we'll strive towards which those two are.
All right, thank you very much. I guess we now, we ask for nominations for that position, or we nominate, or we just have counselors say they would like to stand? I'm not too sure if we have to nominate it. Counselor, Deputy Mayor Freeman?
He just muted himself.
You just muted yourself. You're not talking.
I realized that. I clicked the wrong button, and you guys all disappeared. I would like to nominate Counselor Van Cooten-Bossens.
Okay. Counselor Lesser?
And I'm gonna nominate Deputy Mayor Freeman. I'll also nominate Counselor Van Cooten-Bossens.
As a second, okay, certainly. Counselor Van Cooten-Bossens, you have your hand up.
Sorry, I will second that nomination for Deputy Mayor Freeman.
Okay. Further nominations?
Guess I'll nominate myself, Counselor Hughes.
Deputy Mayor Freeman? Deputy, sorry, sorry, I apologize. Counselor Petrie?
I'll second Counselor Hughes.
Okay, so now we have now we're caught with the same rock and the hard spot.
You're running an election, your worship.
Yeah, I know, I know. Here we go. Counselor Bowman, have you voiced up at all, or are interested in voicing up for nomination at this point in time? Well, you see, clerk, you, you could pull me out of this anytime.
You're getting yourself into a corner, your worship.
I, I think what we need to hear is to make sure that there's no other nomination, so counselors that have spoken up to nominate.
We have three nominees for this, and this is Counselor Hughes, Deputy Mayor Freeman, and Counselor Van Cooten-Bossens.
Yes, so I'm sorry, I guess we were waiting for Counselor Bowman. Was he, was he nominating anybody there, or?
I, your, your worship, if, if I, if I might, I think with, with my decision on who I have picked to sit on, and I think I can, I can make the motion at this point.
Okay, yes.
Unless you want further nominations, otherwise.
We're gonna wait for council to decide that, kind of. I think is what, how, how that kind of moves forward.
Okay, well, in, in my, in my opinion, I would nominate Counselor Deputy Mayor Freeman and Counselor Van Cooten-Bossens.
Thank you. And we have Gord Lesser, Counselor Lesser also nominating Fred and Counselor Van Cooten-Bossens.
If I'm understanding correctly, I think Counselor Bowman was raising the resolution.
Yes, I, I would like to, with, with my thoughts in mind, clerk, I would like to read the resolution, because I think that will clarify us, and then we won't get ourselves into an election position.
That's, I understand what you're doing. So, your worship, if, if you can ask if that's a seconder for that resolution, then you can see if it's carried, then we can move from there.
Enough, then. Do we have a, a seconder on that motion?
Well, your, your worship, I might want to read the motion first. Your worship, just, just, okay, let, let, let me go ahead. Michael, please, please feel free to correct my, my language in this, if you so wish. Move by myself that report A dash one zero one seven dash two zero be received by council of the town of Ingersoll as information. And further that, despite the current hiring policy, we would amend our policy for this purpose only and appoint Deputy Mayor Freeman and Counselor Van Cooten-Bossens as the council members on the selection committee for the CBO. Does that sound logistical, Michael?
That sounds great.
Okay, do I have a seconder on that?
Sure, Counselor Lesser.
Counselor Lesser, thank you very much. Further comment? Those opposed? Counselor Hughes, thank you. This has been, this motion has passed. Thank you.
Now that we got that complicated one out of the way.
Okay, now, appointment of interim CBO. CAO, sir?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Comiskey. So, as a municipality, only a CBO can issue and administer the Ontario Building Code. So with our incumbent leaving on June nineteenth, and the likelihood of having a replacement by that time, I'm not practical. We did reach out to our neighbors in Zora Township. I spoke with my counterpart, the CAO there, and inquired whether they'd be willing to provide that service. They have agreed to provide that service on an interim basis. Their incumbent will only act in capacity as a chief building official for administering the code on an interim basis. They will not be taking over any of the other duties that are attached to our position permanently, so they won't be involved in facilities management or bylaw enforcement. Those will be re-delegated to other staff members on the interim. So they've agreed to that, and having done that, we have a bylaw for council's consideration this evening. As the CBO has to be appointed by bylaw. So, any questions, I'd be pleased to try and address them.
Thank you very much. Do you want to read the motion first, or would you like to, there's nothing wrong with having a little bit of a discussion before we read it. So does anybody have any thoughts or comments at this point in time before we read the motion? For clarification or anything? Deputy Mayor Freeman?
Not so much clarification, your worship, but I see that Shannon, his time is, 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 is with us, and probably not gonna get a chance to see her again. So Shannon, really appreciate all your hard work, your professionalism. Going to miss you. You miss your smile. You've been a very hardworking employee for the town of Ingersoll, and thank you so very much. And she's not gonna show her face. She's here, though. Thank you, worship.
Thank you. Further comment? Then I would ask, call upon Deputy Mayor Freeman to read the motion.
Thank you, sir. Move by myself that report A dash zero one nine dash two zero be received by the council of the town of Ingersoll as information. And further that council appoint by bylaw, Mr. Mike Hughes as interim CBO with all the duties, responsibilities, and authority for the town while serving in that capacity.
Thank you. Could I have a seconder? Thank you very much. Counselor Hughes? Further discussion? Those opposed? This motion is carried. Thank you. We have Earth AGM date change, please. Is that, is that you, clerk?
Yes, that's correct. So this is relatively straightforward report. As you can see, Earth is planning to do their AGM and hoping to push it back slightly because of the COVID situation. Just brings them slightly outside of the timeframes that their policy requires. So we need agreement with the shareholders, and Ingersoll is, of course, one of the shareholders, so that's why this report here is here. Staff are saying we agree and are recommending that council pass the resolution to support that amendment.
Thank you very much. Counselor Van Cooten-Bossens, could you read the motion, please?
Certainly, your worship. Move by myself that report C dash zero one eight dash two zero Earth Annual General Meeting be received by the council of the town of the Ingersoll as information. And further that council approve the extension of the Earth AGM until September tenth, twenty twenty.
Could I have a seconder on that motion? Counselor Lesser, thank you. Further discussion? Those opposed? It is passed. Thank you very much. Reopening issues and recommendations? Where did our CAO go? There, you are over here now.
He moves around a lot.
Moves around.
So we have the Director of Community Services has wrote a fairly comprehensive report along with his team on the challenges with reopening parks and recreation and other community service activities. So I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Stavonovic to walk you through that report and answer any questions council members might have. So.
Hello, Kyle.
Hello, everyone.
Good evening.
So as Bill mentioned, staff and I have taken or put in front of you a very detailed report. So the province was actually kind to us to send us a bunch of guidance documents pre-making the announcement today on what a potential reopening of facilities could look like. So there's various guidelines and protocols that would have to be met to actually safely open to the public. Staff and I went through those guidance documents and created what you see in front of you on what reopening could look like. We tried our best to break everything down to be by amenity or be by facility. There are slight differences between each in terms of what the guidelines are for a safe reopening. So it's a very detailed report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. And if council wants, they could go through each facility one by one if they think that that will help. But I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Kyle, and it's a very good report. My compliments on it. The extensive work into there is superb. I, I read it through and fully, fully understood where you were coming from, and, and some of the facts that you put in there are terrific. I would like now to call upon council to make comments or questions, please. Seeing none. See how good that report was, Kyle? Oh, oh, hold, hold. Counselor Lesser? Did you wave a little quicker, couldn't you?
Well, I did. I'll go on mute. We get Kyle to go on mute because they're getting a lot of feedback since he's been on.
I think he heard you.
Okay. Same thing. I appreciate the report and the work that would be involved to open everything. I guess my question a little bit for Kyle is a concern. Again, say with a splash pad, I realize we need to do some work there, and if we can get that work done, I'm comfortable with leaving it closed. But the question is, how soon will we know that we can get that work done? If for some reason we can't get that work done this summer because we're not able to find a contractor to actually do the work? I'd like council to consider opening the splash pad then for the summer. Kyle, really, like, what, I don't know exactly what we need to do. I can't remember in the report. Does it seem feasible that we can find the contractors to do it?
We've been in constant communication with our contractor that we work with now in terms of reopening. And they're the experts in the field, ABC Recreation, in terms of opening and closing facilities and doing the conversion that's required. So staff during this time has been working with them. It's more finding has been working with them. It's more finding, very able to do the work. It's finding a contractor to be able to connect to the storm and to the county to be able to install the new waterline that we're still working on.
Okay. So never mind, I'm uncomfortable leaving it the way it is then.
Councillor Van Cooten Bosens, and then I believe I got Fred.
Thank you, worship. So on that, if I can, through to Kyle, if we, I I would agree with councillor Lessor that if we can't get somebody to do it, is it going to be detrimental to look at opening it? I I like how you've laid it out that there's like three different options of opening if and putting signage up or opening and putting people there. You know, can we look at opening it with the signage and not having people, not having to do more staff in that respect? But I mean, would the splash pad still work even if we can't get the the work done? Does that make any sense, Kyle? Sorry.
Yeah, if I'm reading correctly, we could definitely, if if council so chose, we could open and just put the signage up. And if social distancing and gathering of groups is not adhered to, then we'd be forced to close. We could open and staff and control entry. And we could do those things while we secure the contractor and the required work. So we may have to end the season sooner than we normally would. But we could open for a period before construction would begin, if that's what council so chose. So it does still function, could still operate.
I think that I think that my thought is, is that we've got to pass the buck again back to yourself and the CAO for timing wise to say whether the contractor, what is the timing the contractor can come on board? Does it make sense to fire it all up and get rolling with staff and everything else for a two week, a three week, a four week? You'll have to, I believe you'll have to establish that yourselves. In my opinion, allow allow administration to administer and 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 deal with the situation the best way possible. You know, we know, all know, we'd love to get back to normal as soon as possible. And certainly, in the summer, having that splash pad would be advantageous for the youth and going along with the rules and regulations that we could lay out. But as far and if the work does have to be done, like I say, how late in the year can it be looked after? And then you'd have to weigh it to see whether that makes sense staffing and everything else to incorporate. I have to go to Fred first. Councillor Deputy Mayor Freeman?
Thank you, worship. I just want to state it was, it is a very detailed and very extensive report. A lot of disappointing things in there, to say the least, because there's so many things. Yeah, we can open, but there's so many safeguards that are going to be in place. And so I I guess, is it possible that, yes, this is on our agenda, can we make sure that this is accessible on our website so that we can constantly point the 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 community towards it? Because I don't think any of us can memorize why this, why that. We're going to get that. We're going to get questions from the community. Well, why is that open? Why can't we do this? Why we can't? So can we please do that, Michael? Make sure it's up on our website?
Once.
And thank you, worship.
Councillor Use, then back to you, Christie.
Yes, like the rest of council, this is a very detailed, very onerous report, for sure. My question is on the skate park and the tennis courts. So I know there's, we'll start with the tennis courts because that's quick and easy. There's one tennis court over in Westfield that is currently tore up. Would that be completed this year and being able to open up again for next year?
Simple answer is yes. We have to put the tender out for the resurfacing, then select contractor and resurface them. But they're in a condition right now that it would not be advisable to open because there's some pretty significant cracks. It was a job we were trying to get done last year, and the tenders came in over price. We added money to this year's capital budget to be able to make the work happen. So we're in the process of getting the tender out right now. We get the tenders back, we resurfaced it, and then we'd be able to reopen.
Westfield. Now, the other, we have another tennis court. I apologize. I'm not a tennis player, so I'm not sure. Do we have another tennis court in town that we would have to or that we would consider opening or after restrictions?
No, Westfield is the only one that we look after.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay. So my next question is on the skateboard park. Three options are remain closed until restrictions are lifted, open the park, install signage equipment, the then hire staff to control the entry. The other is basically open it, install signage, and it's opened and closed in the evening, but there isn't any disinfection requirements. And but the signs would say so. I can't see why we couldn't open that. That is an outdoor area that and most of the age group of the people using the skateboard are, they would be affected if they were to have caught COVID nineteen. But in most cases, their their immune system is up to battling it. And I understand, yes, they do take it home and they go visit family members that might be of, excuse me, that might be vulnerable to it. But however, it's like I say, it's, I think we need to at least free something up for for the youth in our in our municipality in order to keep them, you know, keep them, especially in the summertime, keep them occupied.
Thank you. Councillor Van Cooten Bosens?
Thank you, your worship. Question for you, Kyle, is the the perks, like not the park park itself, but the playground equipment, is that being scheduled to open it all in any way, shape, or form?
It was not included in any of the conversations or communication that I've seen come out today.
Okay, so if I may, your worship, just follow up on that then. But if it were to come out, let's say, in a month, would we be able to get the work done on the splash pad so that that and the playground equipment then would be able to be opened at the same time? Is that a possibility at all? Do you know what I mean? Like, I'm just, I'm trying to, I I get that, I think that it should be the same as the skateboard park. If we're going to look at the skateboard park, it's on their own recognizance, we take and put up the signage saying that this has not been disinfected. It's at your own risk in that respect. And then we, but if if the province decides to allow the the playground equipment to be open, if we could have that and the splash pad be open at the same time, at least it gives kids some place to be able to go that are younger as well with their parents. I mean, most of them do have parents that go with them to the splash pad. So it's up to them to make sure. I don't want to see us put a staff member down there and control it going in and out. If if we find that it, they're not doing the social distancing, then it gets closed down. But that's upon the community then at that point. And I think that parents will will police themselves at that point. But that's just my thoughts. So I'm just wondering about whether or not you think that the work would be able to get done then, Kyle? Thank you, worship.
Thank you.
So I guess probably the best way to answer the question would be, our original plan was to do the work on the splash pad in the fall anyways, pre any global pandemic, was that at the end of this season, we were going to have everything lined up to be able to do the work this fall. So if there had be no global pandemic, we would have operated this season on the recirculating system and then converted in the fall, was the original plan. Now that it has been closed, and we've been meeting with our contractor, we've been trying to see if we could get the project to start earlier to give us some more time. To complete the work instead of trying to fit it into September, October.
Councillor Petrie?
Thank you, worship. I would like to say that we should have faith in people, but we're talking about kids here, and kids don't fully understand 100% what's going on all the time. They just want to have friends. They just want to be with their friends is, you know, and if we just leave it to police themselves, unfortunately with the skate park and stuff, I believe that you're going to have, you're leading to something that can be maybe not the most responsible thing. If staff saying the most responsible thing is to keep it closed at this time, we're heading towards less restrictions. And when we get to less restrictions, then yeah, it can open up. But right now, there is still restrictions. There's still a pandemic going on. We're still under emergency orders. We should act like we're under emergency orders. I understand people want to be cool and have fun and be in the water and stuff like that. But we're under pandemic. We need to do our part to make sure that this stays on the right track. And by doing that, or by doing the most that we can, yes, it's burdensome, but I believe it's the right thing to do. I agree with all the recommendations in here. I don't want to see more staff added. I do think we need to be cognizant of the fact that we are going to face, the community is going to face a recession or possible recession going forward. We need to be cognizant of saving as much money as possible at this point.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we have a, we have a large motion in front of us. And again, it's going to be one of those things that I don't think one vote's going to be able to cover all the bases. But do we? I guess we can go through to councillor Lessor and have him read it, and then we could comment or or make friendly amendments at that point in time?
Well, I got to go back to our clerk, Michael. Point one through four don't seem to be contentious. So can I divide this up so points one through four can be read and then point five and point six dealt separately?
Sure. Whatever you'd like to do.
That's fine.
I just don't want to confuse the man. Okay, anyways, so let me start. Moved by myself that report CS dash oh one one dash twenty be received by the council of the town of Ingersoll as information. And one, that council approves all Ingersoll Community Service Facilities, Fusion, BPCC, and Arena remain closed until restrictions are lifted to a point at which it makes sense to open from both an operational and financial perspective. Two, and further that council approves the cancelling of 2020 summer camp program. Three, and further that council approves reopening outdoor basketball courts in accordance with public health guidelines. If physical and social distancing and public health guidelines are not maintained by public, then we would be forced to close them. And four, further that council approves keeping the Westfield tennis courts closed for the season in order to accommodate resurfacing of the courts as per the 2020 capital budget.
Could I have a second on that, please? Thank you, Christie. Councillor, thank you. Further discussion on those four top items? Thank you. Those opposed to the motion? The motion is passed. How would you like to proceed with the next two, Gord?
Well, I'll separate them, just because it sounds like councillors have different issues, but I'm going to read them as printed, and we can always amend. So moved by myself that report CS dash oh one one dash twenty be received by the council of the town of Ingersoll as information. And further that council approves keeping the skateboard park closed until restrictions are lifted to a point at which it makes sense to reopen.
Could I have a second? Councillor Petrie? Now, comments, please. Seeing none. Those opposed? Seeing none. This is passed. Thank you.
Okay, and again, just so we can bring it on the floor, moved by myself that report CS dash oh one one dash twenty be received by the council of the town of Ingersoll as information. And further that council approves keeping the splash pad closed for the season to complete the, sorry, splash pad capital work this summer.
I would like to make a, I guess we have to have a, do we have to have a second before we make a friendly adjustment? Or can we do it before a second? Clerk?
You should probably have a second to open discussion.
Can we have a second on this, please? Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. I'd like to make a friendly request that we actually leave this to the discretion of the Director of Parks and Recreation to see what he can do to have it open for the summer and and do the work in the fall or to his, actually to his discretion, I suppose, on the availability of workers to be able to do it and and to have as much use of it as possible for the summer with keeping in mind staffing and and cost.
If I could, you're, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Which one do you want? Bill, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Michael. Yeah, your worship, that's not a friendly amendment. Actually, that's
That's a book.
A motion that's completely different than the intent of the motion that's on the floor. So I I think in due course, you should call the vote on the motion on the floor. And then if that passes, we have an answer. If it doesn't, then somebody could put a separate motion like you have suggested on the floor for consideration.
Sounds very good. Could I have then a further comment on the motion that is on the floor right now as it reads item six? Any further comment? Okay, those against this motion? We have one, two, three, four, five. We have five against, so this motion has failed. Thank you. Councillor Lessor?
Your worship, as to what you were saying, might have, might have sounded a little convoluted, but I think we have the gist of what you were trying to imply. And I'm sure Michael Graves can make that sound really good. So I will second actually that motion that if there is a way to have the splash pad open, I would like to see it open for the summer.
You are overestimating my skills.
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Mayor?
Please, CAO.
I think I think we need to be very clear, and especially since some of these things is pointed out by councillors earlier in the discussion, these are going to be hot button issues for the community. So I think council should give clear direction to staff. So if it's council's intention to keep the splash park open, following the guidelines that are in place established by the province, that's the direction that should be given to staff, and will defer any capital construction until after Labor Day. So if if that's the intent of council is to allow for the splash pad to be operational for the hottest two months of the year, then or hottest three, June, July, and August, then just give us that direction and we can follow it.
I understand, and thank you very much for that comment. The only thing I I don't want to do is I don't want to mess up two years. And that is, as Kyle, if if you, if the contractors say they, after Labor Day, they cannot complete it after Labor Day, and it's going to extend then into next spring or whatever the status is, and not have us open up with a good season next year, then then we have to do it now rather than mess up, mess up both. Councillor Petrie?
Yes. My only worry is, we opened it up, people are hoarding to the splash pad because it is the splash pad, and it's very popular during the season usually. We then have to shut it down because we're now can't be within the regulations the province sent with us. And we lose the whole, we used all that time anyway that we could have used to get it up to spec so it's spectacular next season. And then we make sure it gets done. So we're not waiting till Labor Day, and all of a sudden stuff happens, and it's something, it's way more work than they thought. And then, like you said, we're not, now at the beginning of next year, it's not ready to go.
We've opened up, a comment from here, from the chair, we've opened up public access to groups less than ten. How do you govern that? How do you control that with a hot? public access to groups less than 10. How do you govern that? How do you control that with a hot, hot day and a splash pad open? I suppose it's going to, the demands on staff Kyle likely are, is it their responsibility as a staff member to start? By, you know, that kind of enforcement or did they call the police on them? Jeepers Kyle, what's your thoughts? If I, if I can ask through the CAO, through his staff to ask for a comment on it?
Kyle, so my comment would be that in accordance with the guidelines, I gave council the option of you can open it to the public. And if they're not, the guidelines are not adhered to, we would likely be forced to close it. Or we would be forced, if council so choose, to hire staff to control entry. Essentially put a snow fence around it to be able to create entry and exit point. And that would be the way that you ensure that the guidelines are followed, but that comes at a significant expense to be able to do that. So those were essentially the two options I gave other than keeping it closed.
Correct.
It can be open and we rely on the public to adhere to the guidelines. If we staff it to make sure the guidelines are adhered to, or we keep it closed are kind of the three options.
Bill?
Yeah, we're definitely between a rock and a hard place. And yeah, so I'm not sure where I'm getting that feedback, Kyle, if you're mute again, please. So you know, and the director makes a good point. So we open it up on a Monday and they're not adhering to the guidelines. So we, we make everybody exit and close it. Do we open it up Tuesday morning again and hope that everybody follows the guidelines until they don't? And then we close it again that day? Or do we wait till the guidelines are not followed once and then we close it for the rest of the season? It's very problematic. You put fencing up. I just envision nothing but complaints. And that's why we're going to publicize counselors' numbers very clearly on our website because can you imagine being a mother with three little kids on a day like tomorrow's going to be with humidex around 48? And we're saying you have to wait to get in because there's already 15 people in the splash pad and you can't go in until five people leave. It is going to be problematic. There's no way people are going to follow the guidelines voluntarily. And there's no way they're going to be satisfied with our enforcement of it. But yeah, it's a dilemma. I, you know, you, I don't see how we win on this one, really.
Then I, then, then my, my vote is is to keep it closed until we have a word from the ministry that it's, it's, it's okay to. You know, it's, it's. Yeah.
Yeah, we're all in new ground here. We're uncharted ground, so.
Council Van Cooten Bosens.
So I'm sitting here, I'm very conflicted. I am a mother now and not that I'm planning on taking my daughter to the splash pad, but it is coming up to the hottest days of the season. And I'm hearing what you're seeing, saying, Mr. Cao. And but I can see the phone calls that we're going to get because it is closed when the ministry is saying, yes, you can open. So I, I'm, I'm in a quandary as well. I want to be able to provide. It would be nice that, and maybe I am putting too much faith. I don't know. But I am putting faith into people that they will adhere, and I apologize for my dog, that they will adhere to the restrictions that are in place and and not, and not do any of that. So I'll cut my comment short. Sorry.
I don't think that dog's going to fare well.
Doesn't look like it.
I think he was getting a treat, wasn't he?
Okay, Christie, do you still have a dog?
Yes, I have a dog, but she's going to be a dead one soon.
Lesser?
Well, I'm going to chime in again that I would like to see if there's a way we could open it exactly for the same, the same reason. It's going to be a hot summer. I realize we're going to have problems, especially if we need to fence it and restrict it. But I think that's something we're going to have to face no matter what we do. Let's face it, as these restrictions lighten up, it's not like the province is going to go from you can have a group of five people to you can have a thousand people out there. So no matter what we do with any of our facilities, we are going to have restrictions and we're going to have to live with complaints. Either that or we have to leave them closed for, who knows? Eighteen, you know, could be a year, could be 18 months. So I think at some point we need to start to open a few things up for the public. And yes, Bill, that's fine. You want to post our numbers and they want to either phone or come in and complain because they had to stand in line to get in. I think people are getting used to that right now. You look at a number of the businesses. I'll just say I went to go to the bank today. There's a fourth person in line and I had to stand there until people left. So I could go in and go and do my banking. People will adjust to this. We, we got to give something to the public.
So.
Counsel Petrie? I think, I think that again, I'm going to go back to, we're still under emergency orders in a pandemic. Where the worst thing you can do is reopen too fast. Putting a splash pad, a splash pad is not an essential item. It's a one. I saw kids playing in a creek the other day. That's the original splash pad, I guess. What did we do before splash pad? Did everybody just boil over and not have any opportunity? We're seeing here that staff is, this is a hard, the easiest thing to do is say, hey, it's closed because we're having a pandemic and we're going to do maintenance to it. The hardest thing to do is try to open it up and A rely on when they got three hot children to like not go in there because oh wait, there's five other people and there are 10 other people. Or try to make it like can, this one land and everybody go in for five minutes. That's an administrative nightmare. And the easiest thing to do is just leave it closed. When the government says it's fine, that you don't have to have 10 people or whatever restrictions in there. There's time to open it up. If not, we take this opportunity, we make it better for next year. And everybody will definitely flock there next year and enjoy it because they'll remember how much they miss it.
I have to, I have to agree with you, Council Petrie. Okay. Counselor Lesser, forgive me, did you make a new? Motion or are you planning on making a new motion?
I'm a little confused. I thought you were saying that.
I know. I didn't know whether it was coming from you on that. Because I'm going to.
Okay, I thought you were bringing one forward yourself that we should be seeing if there was a way we could open it. And I was willing to second that with you. So I guess you're not making a motion towards that end.
Correct.
All right.
Just a second. I would like to hear from Cao if at all possible. You're on mute.
I think Counselor Lesser was controlling my volume. Sorry. The, I think there was five counselors that voted that they didn't want to keep the splash art closed. I think in light of what I'm hearing from an administrative perspective, what I would suggest to you to consider is that we allow opening and we post the park, that people should respect social distancing and groups shouldn't gather more than 10. And I don't know what capacity, Kyle, we could maybe talk to the health unit about how many people could actually be in the splash park at one time if they kind of separate themselves. And then just sign it appropriately and leave it as Counselor Van Cooten Bosens says that the community will police themselves and then we'll have to monitor the situation. So I don't know if that's a compromise the council can live with or not.
If we, if we have, if they, if they don't adhere to it, charges laid?
Your worship, if they didn't adhere to it, we report back to council, we probably have to shut it down. I mean, the options for becomes not that attractive a place to stand around in, right? So if we find that the crowds are too much and we talk to public health and it becomes a health concern that we need to address, we can turn the water off and come and readdress it with council.
Counselor Van Cooten Bosens? And then I got Rick.
So I'm going to put forth a motion that, I'm sorry, I'm going back through. I'm trying to find about the splash pad. But essentially what the Cao just said, that we opened the splash pad with signage following practicing the social distancing. We're not putting a person there. We're not putting fencing up, just the signage. And then we will monitor from there. And if social distancing is not followed, then we will be forced to close it. Does that make sense? You'll make it sound pretty, right, Michael?
And we'll sell with public health too.
Thank you. And consulting public health. I appreciate that. Thank you, Bill.
Could I have a second or on that?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Thank you. Okay, now comment, Rick, would you like to comment on that? Because you had your hand up a little earlier.
Yes, I would. So I believe that water is chlorinated in order to help keep it clean, correct? If that's the case, the percentage of chlorination, is it enough to kill all the COVID virus? I know nobody here is a doctor. Kyle, thank you, Kyle.
So what I can see is in the documentation that has come out so far, and they don't know a lot about the virus yet, is that there's no transmission through the water that they know of, but there could potentially be transmission through touch point. So touching of the button or of any of the amenities could potentially be a touch point. The washrooms there were are also closed. That would be another decision if we're opening, if we're opening those washrooms and signing them accordingly. Because that again is increased touch point. Transmission through water, there is no research to say that the virus can be transmitted through water. Again, they don't know a lot about it, but so far they're saying it can't be transferred through water. It is chlorinated, yes. And we would likely increase the sanitization level just to be sure. As that's in the guideline documents as a recommendation to increase sanitization level. So that would be something we would look at doing.
So, so there would be through natural progression of the water splashing on all the kids, splashing on all the touch points, splashing on all the amenities, potentially would wash away, kill a lot of the, of the, of the virus that everybody's concerned about.
Mr. Mayor, through you, yeah, within the water, I think the director's saying transmission to transmission. It's the problem where you get people standing next where little Johnny meets Sally and they run and hug before they ever get within 10 feet of the water. Where two families are standing side by side with their three kids and the three that they're supervising before they ever hit the water. So it's all around the social distancing and the issues around that, the fact that kids splashing in the water, the risk goes down when that happens, but it doesn't mean that people infected with the virus wouldn't convey that virus to others when they're in close proximity. So it's the risk and those are the guidelines that they've set out for us from the province. That, you know, as of Friday, the province is going to say you can open splash parks and pools, but you're to follow the guidelines and the director's saying it's one thing to say they're open. It's another to actually adhere to the guidelines that the province is asking us to adhere to.
Okay, further discussion. Michael, do you have the, the motion kind of written up in some one way or another that we could have it reread?
Yes, just give me a second here.
Most certainly.
It's on page 510, Michael, if that helps.
Yeah, no, you guys have changed it so much. It's not, doesn't resemble that anymore. So.
You're welcome.
Yes. Yeah, I'm not going to say this very well.
Do you want me to take a stab at it?
I think I got it. Just give me one second. Okay, so.
Counsel directs staff to open the splash pad with signage advising to follow social distancing, that there be no staffing provided, no fencing provided. Social distancing is not followed, the staff will be given authority that to close the splash pad. All public health recommendations are to be followed.
I think that captures everything, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and we have a motion of Van Cooten Bosens and a second or by Lesser. Is there any further comment on this? Those not in favor of the motion? It is passed. Thank you. Counselor, pardon?
Counselor Lesser has.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor.
That's okay, your worship. I know we're through special staff reports and I'm going to ask counselors indulgence a little because this was an issue that only came up Thursday and a little late to be able to make it to our agenda, but with coronavirus. For the counselors, you don't know, it came out Thursday that restaurants that have outdoor patios, they can open up the outdoor patios. So I had two of our downtown restaurants come and ask me about the possibility of doing a pop-up restaurant. So for those of you don't know what one of those are, that's basically using the sidewalk in front of their business, which would have to be cordoned off to set out some tables and run their restaurant. When I've seen it done in other cities, we would probably lose about two parking spots or so. That's normally covered in, I call it a duck board so that anybody walking on the sidewalk can then walk onto that area and move around the closed off area. I talked to our Cao about the possibility of this. He did mention that Woodstock has actually got some rules and regulations for pop-up restaurants like this, not dealing with the COVID issue at the moment. So I don't know where we are there. Anyways, because like everybody, they're hurting and time is of the essence. I was hoping that we maybe have a brief discussion on it if that was agreeable with council and see whether we want to allow this idea to proceed. Again, it's mostly going to fall on staff, whether they can come up with guidelines that can obviously make this work. And then the other thing would be it's really up to the restaurants, whatever staff guidelines they would have to follow. Whether it's even going to be worthwhile for them or not.
We have opening.
Sorry, I apologize for bringing it up late, but like I say, this just came up Thursday, late Thursday about the opening and the restaurants approached me Friday. So trying to avoid another month possibly.
Right.
Oh, shut up.
No, no, I'm just saying that I've been thinking about ever since you mentioned it to me and I've been thinking about the impacts on it and whether on the sidewalk, will you be covered for insurance or they have to cover for insurance? If they, if the people then to walk around the restaurant, go out into the, out into the gutter and and we have a boardwalk as such, who constructs the boardwalk and who maintains the boardwalk and who's responsible insurance wise for boardwalks so that it is a wheelchair accessible? There's just so many things came forward on this. I know that the Cao had his. I know that the CAO had his, indicated that he would like to talk, maybe he has spoke more with Woodstock and can fill us in on, on how we legally do this at this point in time. Could you comment, CAO?
Yes, thank you. Counselor Lesser did bring this up and mentioned it last week. It was obviously late in our agenda cycle and it's something that we couldn't just gather. So based on his comments and what's happening in Woodstock, I have asked our economic development team to look at it and try and gather some data. And I agree with Counselor Lesser that we probably should have a conversation about it, but I would disagree that tonight's not the right night for it because there's a lot of questions and things that we have to address. So I'm suggesting give staff an opportunity to gather information, write a report, answer some of those questions in advance and have a special council meeting early next week. And we may have some answers for you and implement some bylaws and have people enter into agreements if that's the methodology that council wants to follow. But there, there would be more questions tonight than answers that we could provide, but staff have no problem working on that this week and having a special council meeting next week to deal with this issue.
Counselor Petrie. No?
No, I just thumbs up. I agree with that.
Counselor Lesser.
I was going to say, I'm comfortable with that too. Let's see what Bill and Curtis and I can find out and move ahead. I, my only concern was waiting till the DAX council meeting. Again, it gets a little long for these people to wait.
Counselor Bowman.
Thank you, your worship. I, I have to support what you're saying, Bill. I too have talked to a couple of the, the restaurants downtown and they, they have made the comment about possibly doing what they can to open up because as Counselor Lesser pointed out, it's hard times for all of us. And we want to do whatever we can do to, to help them, you know, get going and, and at least have some revenue stream. I, I think that, as you pointed out, Bill, we have to take a look at what Woodstock is doing and, and apply that to what we're seeing now with the, the distancing. I know Woodstock has got fences up. First of all, their sidewalks are a little bit wider than ours. And they have put fences up so that they can have their patios out on the sidewalk adjacent to the curb. But in the past, people were walking between the fence and the curb. With the social distancing out there, I don't know how that's going to look for Woodstock and how they're going to handle it because I don't think there'd be any way you'd be, be able to stay six feet apart and, and still be able to facilitate a, a restaurant like that. Counselor Lesser, I, I know what you're saying with the duck boards, but that just enters into the P situation again. And then we're going to get into parking, taking away parking areas. So I, I think I would support the idea. I support Counselor Lesser's idea of trying to do something, but I, again, I'm, I'm going to support Bill's suggestion and trying to get some more answers so that we can, we can move forward intelligently and and make some, some decisions that are based on fact and, and what other communities are doing. So.
Thank you very much. I think I will leave it at that. And, and I think that Bill has brought up something that they can, will look at, they will research out. There's no sense in further conversation in my opinion on it right now because we don't have the answers. We don't even have the questions. So thank you very much. And do you need a direction from council or just, it's just something that you're going to, to do?
The only thing I would request, Mr. Mayor, is that if we could agree that Monday next week, we could have a special meeting to deal with this issue. So. Okay, so we'll move on, get the information.
All in all, you'd have, we'd have quorum anyway, so that's fine.
Okay, so we'll get going on the information, get some reports, some questions and answers and put it in front of council next week, so.
Thank you very much, CAO. Thank you, Bill. Okay, I'm going to call upon, I know that Counselor Van Cooten Bonn has some comments on this, but we might as well have Counselor Petrie read the graduation, graduate request motion and then we can discuss.
Yes, your worship. Moved myself, the council for the town of Ingersoll receives the requests from the Thames Valley District School Board regarding graduates as information.
Could I have a second or on that, please?
Sure.
Counselor Lesser? Okay, discussion. Counselor Van Cooten Bosens.
Thank you, your worship. I knew that it was going to be received as information and so I just wanted to kind of highlight it a little bit. As you all know, our grads have really not had a grad this year, whether they're in grade eight or whether they're in grade 12. Probably a little bit harder for those that are in grade 12, leaving high school and moving on to post-secondary, whatever that's going to look like for them in the fall. And this is something that was brought to my attention and I really, I'm hoping that through maybe the BIA as well and the town, we can get behind, just our whole community get behind in showing our graduates that you know, they have achieved something very special. It is very something, something very special to achieve that status of graduating high school, graduating grade eight even, has been made more popular as well. But especially high school. And so it's a gold for grads. If you haven't looked it up, it's on Facebook, we have the information. I will make sure I forward it over to the town as well and maybe we can get something out that way, but it's lighting up or decorating your home in gold. So or even the color yellow just to signify to the grads that we think that they're awesome and that we congratulate them for finishing a milestone in their, in their life as well. And the big date is really for Thursday, June the 25th. So that entire day, so if you could decorate the night before and have it all ready to go for the Thursday, that would be awesome. But I will make sure I get that information over to Michael and maybe we can get that up onto our website as well. But I just really wanted to put it out there for everybody to help support our grads in our community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Further comments? Did I ask for a second or on that? I did, didn't I? And that was Lesser. Thank you. Those opposed? This is passed. Thank you very much. Going to ask right now, before we get into bylaws, if I could, through yourself, CAO, I'm not putting anybody on the spot or Kyle or et cetera, it's just our large TV on what the status is on Dwan Park on, on its, its operational. I just wondered, would it be at all operational by the, the date of the graduation to kind of put up there, congratulations, one other thing?
Mr. Mayor, I check with our economic development officer. I know he's been working with the sign people to try and get it functioning and I will just check with him and our IT to see how far we are away from actually being able to utilize that sign a little bit more effectively.
No, that'd be great. Is it possible that he would know something maybe for the Monday meeting, just to give a little, for yourself to give a little update?
Sure, we can get, we can give an update on that on Monday as well.
That sounds great. Thank you, sir. And sorry for mentioning that without a pre, pre-request. Enter direction of first and second readings, please. Counsel Use.
Moved by myself that the mover have leave to introduce and go into the committee of the whole on the following bylaws.
No, no, you're right.
Wrong one?
No, you know, you're right. I apologize. That's good. Yes, I'm sorry. Please continue.
Bylaw number 20-5095, capital expenditures and tax rates. Bylaw number 20-5096, BIA levy bylaw. Number three, bylaw 20-5097, appointment, Mike Hughes as CBO. Number four, bylaw number 20-5098, June confirmation bylaw. Council and the committee of the whole, Mayor Comiskey and the chair on motion, the bylaws are accepted and as circulated, that constitutes the first and second reading of the bylaws.
Can I have a second or on the bylaws, please? Thank you, Christie. Discussion. Those opposed? This motion is carried. Thank you. Yes, Counselor Bowman, please.
Thank you, your worship. Moved by myself, Counselor Bowman, that the committee do now rise out of committee of the whole.
Could I have a second or please? Thank you, Rick. Counsel Use. Discussion. Those opposed? This is passed. Thank you. Third reading, please. Deputy Mayor Freeman.
Thank you, your worship. Moved by myself that bylaws 20-5095 to 20-5098, we now read a third time, passed, signed and sealed, that this constitutes the third reading of the bylaws.
I have a second or please? Thank you, Christie. Okay, those opposed? Oh, Counselor, did you want to discuss something, Counsel Petrie? You're frozen with your hand up. Are you just, are you just saying goodbye?
He's really frozen. There he is.
Counselor Petrie, did you have something to say? Okay, all righty. Those opposed? This is passed. Thank you. We have now a motion to adjourn. And that is Counsel Use.
Moved by myself that the council for the corporation of the town of Ingersoll adjourns May 11th, 2020, regular meeting of council at 9:03 PM.
A second or please? Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Those opposed? Oh, come on. This is passed. Thank you, gentlemen. The meeting is over.
And ladies.
And ladies.
And ladies.
Ladies.
More than one.
Yep, there's that E, yes.
More than one.
Thank you, everyone.
Everybody out there, you take care of yourselves. The virus is still there. You take care.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.